Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for the City of Lumsster. We're going to open up our 6:30 meeting after I announce that. Just to let everyone know that this is being videotaped and aired on the left access TV for the City of Lumsster and also recorded and minutes are being taken by our current company. So let's open up the public meeting for site plan approval for 449 Watcheset Street. And I also know there's a special permit attached to that for two matters and we'll open up in another minute or so, but we can start. Do you have anyone here to present it?
Yes, my name is Andrew Barakis, I'm an engineer with AMEC. My company is also known as Wood. I'm not doing a company in America, but I'm the engineer on private.
Can everyone hear?
While you're grabbing that, I can open up the public hearing for the special permit approval for the use at 449 Watcheset Street. And actually at 6:32, so I can also open up the public hearing for special permit approval for 449 Watcheset Street because it's within the water supply protection district. So all three hearings are open.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Andrew Barakis, an engineer with AMEC, also Wood, engineers and scientists in our own business. Phil Bailey is Suntin Solar Developer for the project.
I'm Steve Herzog, I'm a colleague just with AMEC. I'd like to start with the presentation overview on Suntin Solar. We were established in 2012. We were nominated as a 2018 Top Class Solar Developer initially to this Solotv project. We're headquartered in Corby, California, with regional offices in Massachusetts. I work out my home office in Norfolk, also with offices in Delaware, Illinois, and Hampshire, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. We establish off-site relationships with landowners, municipalities, local utilities, housing authorities, financiers. The diagram to the left does essentially all the development activities. We provide full development, construction, owner and operator of the solar PV projects. We're actively developing projects in six states. We've completed successful development and construction in California, Massachusetts, Illinois, and Maryland. We've also added New Jersey to Texas to our development pipeline right now. And our goal is to give a 1,000 megawatt of solar PV projects to complete those in the next three years. Some of the projects that we've created, we see that they're free in Massachusetts, Colton, Pittsfield, and Blanchard. Spencer and Charlton are two projects that are into the, been awarded into the Smart Energy Program, Massachusetts State Program, to bring 1,600 megawatts of solar development into operation. Part of the reason for this project as well, we now have 1,700 sites that are developing across Massachusetts. These are some of our partners. The towns of Agawong and Longmeadow are off-takers for a couple of our Massachusetts projects. The cities of Greenville, Plownee, Illinois, we've established relationships and working with them on projects out there. Direct Energy is a retail energy supplier that has also signed a long-term off-site contract with one of our projects. The Bang and some of our equipment suppliers, Round-Tight, and the only equipment supplier, but these are those that we've ended long-term relationships with. Just a couple of aerial shots of our East Baker Solar Farm in Pittsfield, 4.4 megawatts DC, first year generation of about 5,800 megawatt hours, selling to the Pittsfield Housing Authority and the total solar farm, similar size, and sells under long-term contracts to the towns of Agawong and Longmeadow.
So that was about half the size of the one they were proposing here?
Roughly, yeah.
And just, sorry for interrupting, but can you give me a dimension on that eight a wise, how much is that taking?
It's roughly, we use AC, we use one megawatt six acres, so these are 20, 40, maybe probably 18 to 20 acres. Just the project benefits, we see no greenhouse gas emissions, we don't use any water and reduce electricity, no fuel costs, we are able to have stable predictable pricing of our energy contracts. They operate with a peak hours a day when the energy is needed the most. Many jobs created during construction. We have their non-hand facility once we go into operation and we have personnel in the area, but they're not available when we need them. Opportunities for local businesses to supply, supply goods and services during construction, during the operation project, and generating profit tax revenues for both local and state governments. And with that, I'll finish with the presentation.
Again, Andrew Barakis, Suntin here at AMEC. I'll just do a brief overview of the solar projects in general and get into the specifics of the property in this project in particular. These just show the aerial maps that are, USGS aerial maps are uncovered, the drawings set, and once they get through this overview, I can walk through these drawings and get to any specific details. But again, the sites, optimal west here, we have two, the Grandview Golf Course in the south and the Angel's Forest in the north, and Watcheset Street to the south down here. But in general, we've been involved in many solar projects across the state. This kind of runs through the construction process, which is of course beyond the permitting process, but just to give you a visual idea of what we're talking about, we talk about solar arrays, site construction. There's some photos of site preparation with access road construction here and vegetation clearing, installing the system. Begins out with post-support installation for the rack and system. The modules are placed on this rack and system, which consists of two or more posts installed regularly in the ground. You may see on the landfills on Elm Street, we use a ballast system which cannot penetrate the ground, there's only a field here, we're a ground mountain system in uncontaminated site, so these posts just sort of directly in the ground. Photo of the rack and system here. This is an equipment pad, the electricity generator for the system, selected inverters or transformers on the site, and this is a concrete equipment pad, some of that equipment is located. Some of the underground electrical conduit that I mentioned, and you can see some of the modules are south facing, down at the southern end here, it's about two or three feet off the ground, and then send up to anywhere from eight to 10 feet above the ground. Suddenly facing some, even fixed tilt, fixed tilt arrays, you may have seen some tracking, movable systems, this is just a fixed system that faces south. And there's the module installation with the solar panels finished on the rack and system. This is a one of the ballast systems that I mentioned, maybe on top of the landfill, but on the left here, there's the ground mountain posts, that we're looking at here. And here's our finished product, some fencing, change of fencing, this particular site, that's extreme, vegetation around the exterior. So that's just kind of a general overview of ground mounted solar arrays that we're talking about here. So I'll go over to our drawing set, kind of walk through the overview of the property to get into the project details. So again, here's the overview maps, the local issue machine is now on the left here, Angel's Reservoirs in the north, and the area you can see the Grandview Golf Course itself. So the property office here, the Charn King, unfortunately they could not be here tonight. If there's any questions for them, you can relay to them, again, Suntin AMEC, Sparky Project Team. So this is the project area, parcel ID 388-1. The entire property encompasses over 360 acres. It's found, it's hard to see on this scale, but on the drawings, it's a PL, the property line encompasses this entire area, and the golf course, which is not flooded with the property and mostly wooded to the northern area and the rest of the world. The eastern section of the property, there is an existing conservation restriction, which is just shy of 140 acres off to the east here, sort of the boundaries represented by this dashed line here. Sort of from this line to the east is conservation restriction, and off to the west, we have the golf course and the wood areas. As part of the site background, our land surveyors, we had went out and did property survey, and project survey, and Steve and our eleven, Paul, Steve went out and flagged wells on the property, checking for any crime symbols and buffer zones, and our system to scale. There's one project that we flagged in the initial site background. And the, so the project's located in our zone and water supply protection districts, so as part of that, we, that near the surface buffer zones were conservation standpoint, 100 buffer zones for the well protection act, and 200 foot buffer zone, and a 400 foot buffer zone for the surface water supply, as part of the watershed protection act. So that's a general overview of the property and existing conditions planned here. I go to the proposed sheet. We have, I think I said this, proposed solar array and access road. So the system consists of approximately 21,000 PV modules, which accounts for about 7.5 megawatts DC, so builders should convert it to DC and AC. 7.5 DC is about five AC, just under five AC. So that area equates about 22 acres. So the system is surrounded by a chain link fence, 7 feet high, so this fence area surrounding the system is about 22 and a half acres. So I mentioned Watcheset Street off to the south, Elm Street to the west. The property line is really around here. There's an existing historic bioball that came off of Elm Street, which we're showing the proposed access to come from. As part of the technical new process, coming from the fire departments, have a full 20 foot wide access road, so we're proposing to reconstruct the access road from Elm Street through the wooden area and up to the project site. So again, as you saw in the photos, the system is not a ground mounted action system, about 8 feet high. So two things with the bioball, is a max eight feet height extension, which should be worn right around these 10 feet kind of soil conditions, so potentially we look for that aspect. Then also the fence, a fence area, proposing 7 foot high chain link fence, and bioballs required eight foot high wood fence. All of our projects have those 7 feet high chain fences for security and residential purposes, and especially as a instance, we're large business away from Elm Street and any residences, we can believe a wood fence is necessary on a single area. And so the project's surrounded by the fence and the modules are set back about 15 to 20 feet from that fence for residential code issues. So as part of this, I mentioned, it's a wooded area, at least some tree clearing, required to widen this existing road to the site, and then also to clear trees at the top of the hill, as I showed in the photos. So the tree clearing area is about 25 acres, requiring solid system. So within the fence area, the scuffs will be removed and the system will be installed and finished products, will be around existing grass. So as part of the permit application and the permitting process, we do a stormwater coverage, except as a result of the tree clearing and climbing around surface grass to make sure that the post development runoff does not seem to be previously conditioned.
Part of the way, the entrance road here is still sick, right? It's outside the property line?
It's all red.
That's the cut that's already there, they had the big trim down on it before you get the corn run.
I'm not personally familiar, but it's possible. As you go up Elm Street?
Not orange.
Yeah, yeah.
Before you get to the house.
Right, just after the house, as Steve mentioned. That's kind of the marker. Not much of a road exists now, so we are really just an opening, but as part of this, we widened it, made that accessible for fire and emergency vehicles. As you saw in the photos, there's electrical posts at the end of the road. The road can accommodate fire trucks and ambulances if needed to turn around to your where the equipment is. That electricity is collected in the system through an underground conduit that runs down through the road, and there's proposed utility poles that you have to use, existing utility grid on Elm Street. Now I can get into a lot of other details that require the application. There's electrical plans, specifications, operation maintenance, insurance documentation, commission plans, financial surety and all of that. I can elaborate on more details if needed. But that's kind of a general overview of the project site, as part of the permitting process, since the application had a technical review denied and received department comments, responded to the majority of, a few of the outstanding items to provide more zoomed in plans for greater retail, and also to pin down the exact road location and layout location, feel some feedback from the board, make sure everyone's on board with the layout before we finalize the road layout, hose grading, stormwater controls, stormarm, all of this is done previously, we've gone through several iterations of the array, moved it in order to accommodate the appropriate buffer zones and to utilize the topography as best suited for the site. And that's generally the proposed project, there's another sheet of details here, it's a cross-section of the rack and system, roadway section, using erosion, sediment control plus access road, emergency contact information. A lot of this is subject to construction, which is covered much more verbally in the stormwater pollution dimension plan, applications put together for our construction. These are just some general guidelines for essential SCNA, essential, we just had that major. Essentially, that's a brief overview, or maybe not so brief, but happy to feel any more detailed questions or get into the application.
Who has the contract to get the electricity?
I'm sorry?
Who's your customer for getting the electricity?
It's part of the smart program in Massachusetts, 1,600 megawatts, so if any other source is a, I'm sorry, the National Grid, all the utilities are part of that program.
So what I'll, I think what we should do now is go through the department head comments and your responses to them, and if any of them needs to be elaborated, I'll do that. And then after we've done that, we'll see if the board has any questions. They may inject themselves during this, and then we'll open it up for the public. So we'll start with planning development. I'll go to the ones where, you have the ones that have no response necessary, I'll skip over those. In terms of the utility notification, it's understood that the applicant has applied for an interconnection agreement with national, with Mass Electric, National Grid, and is pending evaluation. Final acceptance must be granted by Mass Electric prior to the issuance of a building permit for offsite solar energy system. The applicant has acknowledged that and requests that the City of Lumsster continue permitting of the project contingent upon final interconnection agreement, acceptance prior to issuance of the building permit. So that's pretty straightforward. I'm sorry, Paul? Oh, it's fine. The next one is, the applicant is proposing to install five, the utility poles are approximately 300 feet of over, hey, of overhead electric lines above ground. The planning board shall evaluate this proposed above ground utilities and make a determination as to whether or not they are acceptable as presented. And the applicant responds that the underground electric conduit is proposed for the majority of electric lines to be installed within the project site, approximately 2,300 feet. Proposed overhead wiring approximately 340 feet has been limited to connection to existing overhead wires on Elm Street with associated electrical components and utility poles as required by National Grid. Again, I think that's straightforward, I won't give any further comment from the applicant. Please interrupt, interrupt me if you want to add something. The next section, the applicant is proposing a seven foot high chain link fence, and the proposed fencing throughout the project includes a seven foot high chain link fence with steel posts in accordance with National Electric Code. The applicant requests a waiver from the wooded pressure treated post requirement. So this is one waiver. As the project site will not be visible from the butters, chain link fencing with steel posts will provide greater longevity and will therefore be less susceptible to failure. This design has been found to be successful in preventing unauthorized access based on past project experience. Okay, so that's one waiver you're seeking.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
I understand from logic that the chain link rather than a wood would weigh seven feet instead of eight.
That's the electrical code, I understand. We've had some other sites that are six feet chain link, with a bit of barbed wire, just for the typical requirements.
But we could request that, because it's a waiver they're asking for.
But yeah, typically it's seven feet for the electrical code.
And while we're on that, so we've got the fence, and what did you say the setback was?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the array is about 10 to 15 feet away from the fence.
All right, so I mean, how far would the other side of the fence be cleared? Because you're going to be doing a lot of clearing, correct?
Correct.
So on the other side of the fence, not the internal setback, how about the external side? How open are you going to plan to make down?
Right now, we're showing this is just outside the fence. Depending on the site and topography, sometimes we go further for shading purposes, but as the plans are showing now, it's just outside the fence.
Which brings me to another question about, so you have the setback on the inside, and you have vegetation where it puts the outside of the fence, because as we all know, the trees will get bigger, so maintenance has got to be there for those trees not to come through the site on the fence, branch-wise. Fire hazard, would any of the equipment to touch off that forest around the watershed?
I'm not aware of, from the comments we've gotten from local fire departments, that for all the projects that we permitted to be constructed out, as far as I know, they have not been able to fire.
Is there possibilities of our, I'm just curious.
I believe if, Billy can speak to the details, that the system can be shut down.
But that's after the fact shutdown, right? I mean, let's say we had some kind of spike, and we got knocked up there, and it went past the fence. I mean, is there anything on the other side of the fence? I mean, that's, I just want to get some comfort around, you know, we're not going to set the whole, the whole woods on fire up there around the watershed. So I don't know if that's ever happened at any sites before, if it's a possibility of happening, I'm just trying to get a feel.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. Personally, I can't see into the details, but not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions from the board on that?
Well, before we continue, I'm just curious, how wooded is in that particular area? Are you aware?
Red pine, not red pine.
I mean, is it very, very thickly wooded, or is there any open space up there at all?
Well, we're going to get to you guys later, so. It's pretty wooded.
It's pretty heavily wooded. There are some, some open areas, it's been logged many years ago.
It was, about 10 years ago, maybe, maybe little parts.
Most of it looks much older than that.
Right, right. Because they, once in a while, they thin out, they haven't thinned out there for a long time. Okay. Okay, performance bond of 159,000 is proposed by the applicant to cover the expenses of decommissioning, and a decommissioning cost estimate and sample performance bond were included in the original site plan and special permit application. As attachment J, the decommissioning cost of 159,000 includes a 3% annual adjustment for inflation over 20 years. Okay, I think, I also think, we've dealt with the decommissioning contracts, sometimes post-approval, on the other one that we did off of Pleasant Street. We've changed it a few times, so. Changed it almost. Yes, we did. So that, that, I mean, this is something that we can always talk, we can always discuss, if it's approved, post-approval as well, but at least we know what the proposal is. The next section is, the subject lot has runage on both Elm Street and Watcheset Street. Natural grade, measured along Elm Street ranges from elevation of 862 at the southernmost point to elevation of 856 at the northernmost point, with the mean elevation of 859. All of the proposed facilities to be cited higher than the permissible eight feet above mean natural grade as stipulated in the relevant section. The elevation is 926 at the highest point. A waiver is requested because the proposed project will not be visible from Elm Street. The solar array area separated from Elm Street by over 2,100 feet of wooded buffer. So can you explain that a little bit, your second request for a waiver you want?
Yeah, essentially, the location of the site is over 2,000 feet away from Elm Street and any residences, so it's going to be extremely hard to see if at all. Therefore, we were recognizing the changing topography from the public way to the site, but given the extreme distance, we didn't feel any additional fencing or landscaping would be required given that, given that extreme distance.
I was talking about how the array is exceeding eight feet. Yeah, so how much, do you have an idea? So you're saying it goes eight to 10 feet, right? So exceeding eight feet, which we allow in the ordinance, and some of them will be 10 feet above mean grade because of the torque, but that's what we said.
Yeah, where the project is, it'll be eight to 10 feet above that grade, but this response was in relative location to the rolling wave.
Yeah, how about on Watcheset Street? You mentioned Elm Street, what about on this list of Watcheset Street?
I was just mentioning Elm Street because that's closer.
Okay, so Watcheset's further.
Yeah. That's the distance here, about 2,000 feet, here's, that's a great 4,000.
Well, the corner's just a little bit. Any other questions, Paul? Okay. Then the, you were to indicate the setbacks of the offsite solar energy system and all the waiting features from property lines and your response, the applicant's response. The setback lines are shown on the site plan in accordance with the ordinance, the closest portion of the solar array to the nearest property line is approximately 475 feet. A table has also been added to the drawing indicating the required setback. So you mean the setback requirements of the ordinance. Obviously, you need a building permit. So that has to do specifically with the site plan itself. Now, in terms of the use of the special permit application. Okay, so the criteria are as follows. The first one is the proposal is suitably located in a neighborhood in which it is proposed to the entire city as deemed appropriate by the special permit granting authority. The proposed project is located in an isolated portion of the subject parcel, separated from Elm Street and the nearest abutting building by over 2,100 feet of wooded buffer. The second criteria for special permit is the proposal is compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by Wright in the same district, and the applicant states that the proposed use for a system for offsite use is permissible with the special permit from us and from the site plan approval and the rural residential zone. The proposed development will be a passive use resulting in limited day-to-day activity upon completion of construction, and will be screened from adjoining structures in Elm Street by over 2,100 feet of wooded buffer. The third criteria is that the proposal will not The third criteria is that the proposal will not constitute nuisance due to air, water, pollution, flood, noise, dust, vibration, lights, visually offensive structures and accessories. And the applicant responds that the proposed project has been designed in accordance with the City of Leamster and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations to mitigate potential negative impacts resulting from development upon completion. The solar array will be screened from Elm and adjacent structures by significant expanses of wooded land. The fourth criteria is that the proposal will not be a substantial inconvenience to hazard or hazard to abuters vehicles or pedestrians. And the proposed, your response is the proposed development will be screened from visibility secured to prevent unauthorized access and will generate nearly no vehicle, vehicular traffic upon completion. The next criteria is adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And your response is the proposed access road fenced area and equipment cabs depicted on the site plans provide adequate and proposed facilities for the proposed solar array. The next criteria is that the proposal reasonably protects the adjoining premises against any possible detrimental or offensive uses of the site, including unsightly or obnoxious appearance. And the applicant is to provide landscaping. And again, the proposed development is screened from view. And due to the buffer, a landscape plan is not necessary to provide additional aesthetics. The proposal ensures that it's in conformance with sign regulations. There are no signs that would just not apply. But if they did apply, it would be within, in compliance with the City of Leamster. The proposal provides convenient, safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets. And the proposed vehicle access to the development is proposed through reuse of an existing drive and extension of a crushed stone access road. No pedestrian access is necessary. I'm going to jump ahead if I'm thinking correctly. I'll just go to the, I think, fire. Fire department would like the access road to be full width from Elm Street to the site. Did you see that?
Yes, I understand. The original proposal, we were looking at utilizing the existing road and just maximizing the excess area. After hearing those comments, I think we just planned on just sort of the full ways of the way.
Okay, great. The next criteria is the proposal ensures adequate space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Proposed access drives throughout the project site are adequate for all loading and full loading, and we can discuss that in terms of Elm Street. The proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and of storage for sewage, refuse, and other waste. There will be no sewage generated on-site within the development. Refuge generation in anticipation is anticipated to be minimal and will be removed immediately as necessary during construction. And the project has been designed and analyzed in accordance with the stormwater handbook and standards to ensure protection of surrounding properties and the reservoir. The next criteria is the proposal ensures protection from flood hazards, considering such factors as elevation of building, drainage, adequacy of sewage disposal, erosion, control, equipment location, refuse disposal, storage of new material, expensive paving, effective fill roadways, and other encroachments. The proposed development is not located within a flood hazard area. The proposal ensures protection of water quality. The proposed development has been designed in accordance with the City of Leamster. The proposed development does not include any use of any hazardous materials. The last section from the planning board is the review of the special permit as it relates to the watershed protection district. The provisions to prevent contamination of groundwater for petroleum products, hazardous materials, or waste. And the applicant responds that upon completion of construction, there are no petroleum products, hazardous materials, or waste during construction. A proposed prevention plan developed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards will be strictly adhered to for protection. Drainage recharge features and provisions to prevent loss of recharge. The proposed access road will be composed of washed angular crushed stone, which will resist compaction and active infiltration trench to promote groundwater recharge. The remainder of the development will be nearly entirely vegetated to closely emulate existing infiltration capacity. The next criteria is provisions to prevent soil compaction. Existing site drains are proposed to maintain, to be maintained throughout the development with exception of the proposed concrete pads and minor leveling for access roadways. Solar panel racks will be mounted on driven posts and construction equipment used throughout the site will be track-mounted to minimize soil compaction. Provisions to prevent seepage from sewer pipes. There are no sewer pipes at the proposed site. A complete list of chemicals. There are no chemicals, pesticides, fuels, et cetera, to be used or stored on the premises in quantities greater than those associated with normal household use. And you also, there's certain technical drawings that are needed on the plan, which you refer to are shown on the plan. Not going to go through all of those. They've been complied with on the plan. Okay, so for the site plan application, provide property lines for the site parcel and adjacent parcels within 300 feet of the site parcel. And you indicate that on the plan. Are all existing buildings on all adjacent parcels within 100 feet of the site parcel, existing buildings within 100 feet are shown on the plan. Notations of separation distance has been added to the drawings as requested. At all proposed utility lines, and there are no proposed utility lines, proposed underground electric conduit and overhead lines are shown on the drawings. Display proposed changes to landscaping of site, including grading and vegetation. The limit of proposed tree clearing is shown on the drawing. The majority of the site is wooded, therefore, tree clearing will be required in order to reduce shading and maximize the energy output of the system. Only the stumps within the proposed fence area will be removed. Otherwise, stumps and existing root systems and ground cover will remain. The proposed tree clearing limit encompasses approximately 25 acres of the 363-acre property, almost 7%. Proposed grading is limited to roadway installation only. All other areas within the project site are to maintain existing grades. The fire department will review and will hold for those. The site plan must depict any building within 300 feet of the property. The existing buildings within 300 feet are shown on the plan. You must show 100 feet of wetland buffer zones. And you acknowledge that. The ordinance also, you must demonstrate how screening is provided. The abutting properties surrounded the proposed development are nearly 100% wooded. And again, you comment that the nearest building is 2,100 feet away. Snow storage. Snow plowing will consist of pushing snow to the sides of the proposed access road similar to a roadway. There is ample space along the sides of the access roads throughout the site to cover snowplow and snow. A notice been added to the site indicating that snow will be managed by plowing to the sides of the proposed access roads. Okay, there is no outdoor lighting proposed, so therefore not required. Due to isolation of the project, you don't, again, propose any landscape design. No side yard setbacks. The rest of the site plan, section of the ordinance, is not applicable. And for stormwater management, the proposed peak rate of stormwater runoff will not exceed the existing rate as shown on the previously submitted report and the report will be modified per the DPW director comments and pending the final array and roadway layouts. Okay, and then, so that's planning. I think, other than the two waivers, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board. I think they've addressed everything, at least technically, that's on the plan. We do have two waivers we have, we'll have to discuss. Let's move on to assessor.
Well, just.
Go ahead, Phil.
I mean, I'm just going through, no outdoor lighting proposed on the project coming on. You didn't have that house there, the equipment house?
It's just a pad, something.
It's just a pad, and it's going to be enclosed, though?
Yep.
Should have some light for that, for your own.
Yeah, typically, we don't have lighting shown in the, you know, in essence of the ordinances in the surrounding community. So typically, we don't propose that.
They're in deep enough for a couple light bulbs on the other side of that picture.
Yeah, essentially, when the inspections are made, they're typically done today. But I think if they were at night, you know, the pickup truck would be out there, they'd have lights or sad, white paddocks and things of that nature. But nighttime access is not.
It's not acceptable. Well, that's good. A lesson to something. Thank you.
Anything else, Phil?
Not yet.
Are you still looking? Or do you want me to move on?
No, you can move on.
All right, I know. Well, because I'm moving on to assessor now, which is planning. The assessor's department states that they have no issue with the project other than this property being, in property being, well, that chapter 8, chapter 61B applies, and the city has the right of first refusal when there is a change in use to purchase the property. Any solar development project should have a pilot agreement in place prior to the construction. And you say you'll comply with that. Has there been any movement on that at all?
Yeah, so Steve is probably speaking for, Steve's working with the Conservation Commission at SAVS. Sure, simply it's our understanding that the punctuation friction does not apply to the entire parcel. He's recorded on the D for portion of the land to the east of the reported solar.
Without any encroachment on this piece at all?
Correct.
I know you broke it down, kind of, you know. Do you know where that boundary is?
Yes, it's the dash line right there, the long dashes.
So anything encroachment on that boundary is conservation.
It's a dash on well length.
61B. Oh, where's the footprint? The old one. The old.
Okay, and I know, in the next section with conservation, they touch upon it as well. And as they state, the parcel land has a conservation restriction on it pursuant to chapter 61B. Oh, no, chapter 61B does not affect the Conservation Commission, but it would like that to be addressed before a notice of intent is filed or before permits are issued from the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission also states that the road is subject to the Wetland Protection Act, which requires an notice of intent to be filed. For wetland crossing, the project may be subject to stream crossing standards. And looking at the GIS, it shows a perennial stream that goes through the wetlands. The project will also have to comply with applicable requirements from the ordinance. And your response is that the applicant will work with the property owners and the city to resolve the chapter 61B designation for the proposed project area prior to issuance of a building permit. And also actually prior to approval from the permitting boards as well. A notice of intent will be filed with the City of Leamster. Conservation Commission in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the project includes proposed improvements to an existing logging road off Elm Street West of the solar project to provide construction and maintenance vehicles access to the solar project. The logging road is narrow, closely approached by forest on both sides, and appears quite old. The logging road also crosses a vegetated wetland. The Conservation Commission has no record of a permit of a logging road and its wetland crossing. A tributary stream to the reservoir drains the wetlands north of the logging road. The mapped extent of the tributary steam and BVW form the basis for 200-foot regulated offset under the regulations of the Watershed Protection Act. Within the zone, any alterations prohibited. The 200-foot offset intersects the logging road. The logging road appears not to be exempt because it was not a structure lawfully in existence possessing all applicable permits and approvals as of 1992. To determine whether the solar project may propose to use the logging road or should seek an alternate location, the solar project component should apply for a variance. A variance from the stricter provisions of the Code of Mass regulations will be granted if the applicant demonstrates that although the watershed protection area does apply to the area, but the proposed activity will not impair water quality in the Haynes reservoir.
Can I also add, since we have another alternative for avoiding impacts of water force suppression at buffers? You see in the, the access road is a curved, twist-down, C-shaped curve right there. So we will relocate that access road to avoid intersection with watershed protection.
So would you go west from this?
Go, yeah. We will relocate to the south where the existing logging roads. So that's the existing, very narrow access road at most.
Oh, I know.
So we'll get it out there. We'll still cross the weather, but we'll be out of that offer. Failure to approach the watershed.
Okay, all right. Onto the DPW. The solar array field grid needs to be placed outside the 400-foot buffer zone from a public surface water supply. The proposed solar array and access road have been reconfigured to be located fully outside of that zone. Show limits of post-construction trimming. The limit of the proposed tree clearing is shown on the plan as indicated by TC lines surround the proposed solar array and access road. Okay, I'm just going to the ones that really have substance here. Soil evaluations will be scheduled with the City of Leamster. The time of concentration delay included in the HydroCAD analysis was intended to account for the timeline associated with overland flow between the access drive infiltration trench and the Haynes River. And the hydrologic model has been updated in accordance with the HydroCAD guidance and modeling of overland flow by utilizing a reach with a wide bottom and very low side slopes. An updated report will be provided pending the final array in roadways.
If I could just elaborate on that.
Please.
That's what I mentioned before, is the previous stormwater report was modeled in a certain manner. And we received these comments and updated that report. And then, we realigned the array and roadway based on previous comments. So we plan on addressing that we can get the comments from stormwater report in the same manner we had done previously. We just wanted to get the roadway and regularity out of final line, and then begin to fly those standards.
Okay, great. The board have any questions about that? The Porta Health states that the applicant should be aware of the geological conditions of the site. Even the shallow regrading of the land may allow groundwater to be discharged to the ground surface during the wetter portions of the year. Some simple mitigating actions can be utilized. And the applicant responds that is noted in the response in DPW, soil testing will be conducted on the project site should conditions warrant mitigative measures will be incorporated into the site design. And the fire department states that it wants the access road, as I stated earlier, and you've responded to the full width from Elm Street to the site. And the applicant has stated that it has been revised to 20 feet wide for the full applicant has stated that it has been revised to 20 feet wide for the full distance from Elm Street to the fence only area with adequate turnaround to accommodate a fire. And I think those are all the comments that apply to all three permits. Any other questions from the board?
Two, three.
Alright, so we're going to now open this up to the audience. If you have any questions, comments about this plan, please, uh, stand up, identify yourself and your address, and then ask your question through, uh, Steve. There are any questions or comments?
I live at 1294 Elm Street.
Your name is?
My name is Lori Back.
And, and hate to do this, but, um, I'm getting old. And the, one of you guys wanted to use this, like, the phone to talk. Yeah, so we should, uh, listen. Plus, the one, he's single, that's, plus, he's ready.
Could you, could you say your address again?
I live at 1294 Elm Street, Leamester Road. Um, so, I heard you earlier talking about fire. Thank you for bringing it up. My concern is that, um, on our road, that that access road is exactly 2.3 miles, living near a fire item located on Sheldon Hill Road, not Elm Street, which is on the corner of Elm Street and Sheldon Hill Road. Now, the other fire item, item on Wachusett Street is exactly 3.7 miles, located on the corner of Wachusett and Peter Sur Street, um, near the all water facility. Now, if something like that was to happen, like you said, might work to happen, how long is it gonna take for a response time? I mean, I've already got it in my kid's head that we grab the ingredients for smores, go to the neighbor's house, and, uh, make smores, and, uh, fire, by house. I mean, it just, you know, that is a very heavily wooded area. If the, you know, if there was to be a fire, is that, how is that gonna affect my house? The community's house? Okay?
Well, yeah, you're bringing up some...
That's a very big concern about us. Also, I report that solar area connect...
Tanker truck, yeah. You know, it's all...
We all maintain, uh, this fire, uh...
Yeah, that's it.
And then you also have to, um, put into that equation the 2,100 feet of access road. So that's quite a long, a long ways. Plus, you have to take into account, the fire station has to actually build a tanker truck before it comes out.
Right.
And how many will need? Uh, I've done some research. I found out that the PP panels for solar farm don't actually cause, uh, impose that big of a risk themselves. However, the rest of the components of the solar farm do pose a greater risk than any other power plant that should be in it, which increases the risk of fire. And, in my backyard, I feel opposite, too.
So transforms down, the tilney bowls down the access road down Elm Street. These have to be, like, uh...
That, to me, is a very great risk. Um, my children have spotted a very beautiful bald eagle in our, in disguise of my property. These things have also posed risks to birds and animals. Um, in a prior report that I spotted today, um, at the town hall, it said that the runoff was going to be graded toward Haynes Reservoir, which is approximately 400 feet, as said earlier, this evening. Within Haynes Reservoir, there are a big species of fish and wildlife. I had already spoken to Ask Wildlife regarding this today. Now, it does not pose any, any risk to them as, as this stands right now, because it is outside the 400 feet. However, solar farms have been proven to cause a great deal of erosion to the land area around it, within it, and around it. It's heavily wooded. Now, you're gonna take away all of the, um, forest and vegetation around it. Nothing that you put in there is going to be able to soak up as much water as it does as those trees take. And that itself is going to cause a great deal of erosion. You're gonna change the, um, soil composition under and around and within the solar, um, solar farm proposing area. How is that gonna affect those properties and my water table? Okay, the house that I live in is the very first house built in this area. It was built in 1971. It was built during the Great Drought of the Times. Nobody knew that it was a swamp in my backyard. I'm the only neighbor that I know that actually has water table issues within my yard and in my house. It was not disposed to be a pond sale in my house. If those water tables rust due to their construction, how is it gonna affect my property? Okay? Um, I need to know this.
That's what it's supposed to be.
They can propose this to protect my property, however, things don't always go as planned, or in the future, they break down. We all drive on roads. We all know that roads are under constant need of repair. So, in the future, if something that they did do now to prevent that, if that eventually breaks down, and in the future, I am up with the foot of my ass again, how, are they gonna take care of me? Or are they just gonna say, "Ha, ha, see ya"? You know, this is stuff I need to know. I know none of my, none of the neighbors I've spoken to in the past and present have problems with water in their homes, but they weren't built at the time of mine. So, I have still lots of questions.
Can you guys answer any of that? Like, the runoff, things like that?
Yeah, I can speak to the stormwater aspect.
Because I think, you know, they have to prove that the runoff impact post-project isn't greater than it is today. They have to, there's a series of things they have to do as well, but I don't know what to...
Exactly what I was trying to say. There's, there's state standards in place, um, so that the post-development runoff does not exceed the pre-development runoff. So we abide by the state standards, and that's, that's what we do, um, for all of these development projects, uh, which is why we're here, going through the planning process. But even on, uh, the conservation side, with the, the wetlands permit, um, and generating stormwater reports, um, there's, there's a science to it. Um, you know, we're not putting in housing development with impervious areas, we're not putting in parking lots, um, we're not putting in, um, you know, we're, we're putting in drag fields underneath these arrays, so the, the vegetation is modeled such that it, it closely mimics, um, the existing issue. And that's, that's what's in our lines in these, in these models. And it meets the state standards, so we stay, and that's, we generate these reports to meet those standards.
But in the future, but in the future, if your vegeta, vegetation happens to, to die or not be taken care of properly, um, and it, no longer ceases to exist, who's responsible for making sure that it stays and continues to grow?
And so, operation maintenance plan is part of the project, and the applicant is responsible to adhere to that.
And who checks and makes sure of that? And all of this stuff has to stay in place. Um, also, there was another provision that, um, you had to take care of, it had to be within 400 feet of public water.
Please, please address, please address us, I mean, only us, really.
It had to be within 400 feet of public water, okay? Your public, your public water sources. Everybody here has private water sources. Those veins run underneath, through all the properties. I don't know exactly where my vein is, but my source of water, and those veins change constantly. How am I also to make sure that our, I mean, neighborhood's water stays clean?
That's gonna be a, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be supposed to have to be revealed. I, I mean, look...
Because my, my private, my private source, I don't know my private sources.
Right, right, well, and that would change.
Or anybody, I'd say.
But, um...
All I can say is, for the construction, we're not, we're not massively grading the site, we're cutting the trees, we're not doing massive excavations, we're driving the post into the ground, we, we're not gonna have an effect on groundwater.
You're not choosing to put, right, but it's gonna be, they're ju, they're just taking trees, um, which the city has worked and passed as well.
Right.
I think the access road has to be built to...
But clearing up larger land, you can't actually change veins and water.
I, I don't like that, yeah. But, I mean, you know, we don't have experts in that. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Well, I, hey, I'll ask you one time. Anyone else have any questions or comments? The board have any questions or comments? I'm, I'm suggesting that we have a, a site walk.
Absolutely. Yep, from, from where the access road to, leave all of here and talk.
Yes.
Site walk, let's get to the answers on...
Fire.
Fire. And, and it's not just the, the rate, it's, you know, the distribution, because you're gonna send those to the distribution point, where it transforms along the way. So more information on that. I also wanna know if there's any history, or has been any history, in art and outside, you know, what you have in the buffer there, woodlands are still, you know, full, or if we should be considering, you know, some kind of, some kind of, uh, distance there. But, yeah, let's think, let's think, so, I can say, but, who answers all of this? Show us the road, walk the road with us, show us what you're cutting. It's gonna be a long way.
What's that called?
You can't turn...
You're walking.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta work off of this one.
I can't, I can't have a... We're gonna pick a date? Yeah, well, why don't we, gonna, gonna go through that? Well, why don't we, why don't we just do it now? Get it done.
Yep.
This, this way the app, because the, the, a bar's here, yes, sir.
Uh, getting that, uh, 1294 Elm Street, that watershed, the wetland in the back, it's actually part of Wachusett Watershed property. Have they been informed with your intent for the, for the permit?
Wachusett?
It's Wachusett Watershed. It goes into the Wachusett reservoir, because when I go into my backyard, there's a tag that says Wachusett Watershed.
I don't know.
Because I can tell you where it's going, like...
It's part of the distribution system.
Yeah.
And then you can say it flush water, well, too, because it's all part of the state distribution system.
But they're part of state, they're not part of the, Leamester State Forest.
Uh, correct. But, it's all in the state.
Yes.
Good point.
Our drawings show the offsets for the watershed protection act, which pertains to Haynes Reservoir to North. And in the bottom left, there's another one, those are all our drainage areas as part of the watershed reservoir. But our access road, then, may or may not be intersecting any of those. So those are the regular offsets that stay out of those. The, the purpose of those is to, um, prevent impact to the watershed on that reservoir. So because we're staying out of those, we're not...
Those are all the, the hardest on the mind, if you're...
Yes.
So just so you understand what he's saying, are you following what he's saying, answering the wise?
Oh, yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah, so, it's still outside that 400 feet that's required, that's one of the requirements for doing it. So he's just giving you the areas, you're trying to stay outside, everything's not happening again. And, I don't think, I don't...
So, alright, so, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so, can we, where is our site walk for?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Four.
Okay, and then, um...
What?
When should we schedule the next one?
Well, I'm gonna be out of time at the third to the fourth. So, you're gonna be out for the first meeting in April?
I'm gonna be first.
Oh, you're gonna be here for the first meeting in April, so...
You're on the second, third to the fourth. So try a second.
April 2nd.
Should be, it's, I don't know, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It doesn't matter.
Alright, April 2nd.
April 2nd is, yeah, Tuesday.
If anyone would like to be part of the site walk, going to watch the area, is there a time of day that's meant for, we, if we schedule it for Tuesday, the 2nd? I know people work, but if you're interested in being there, we could do it either early in the morning or late in the afternoon. Does anyone have a preference? For me, for me, after 4:30 is better, in the afternoon.
About 4:00.
Okay. How about 4:00? Is that okay? Well, do, you have a site walk, something area? I don't know. Alright, well, 4:00?
Gives you three hours.
I don't plan to spend three hours there.
We need, but I don't wanna look you guys in the eye.
I don't, I don't know if...
We can actually walk under that area.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like, just be walking trails, walk.
Yes, alright. Okay, so let's, alright, so let's...
I'm gonna take them, yeah.
Well, so, we're playing on April 2nd, which is Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, at 4:00, at the site.
That's good.
Would you like?
So, you know, tell me the neighbors that wanna come as well.
But specifically, where is the, the off going to be? At the entrance of the rock, or is there a, is there a party jam?
Yes.
There's not, not much. 4:00 is a road, but there's not...
Yeah.
And that road's not very wide.
No.
It won't be good to have...
Is that a street or is that a curve there? Just talking, the, how far about?
It's a little curve, a little point.
Yeah. Is there a fire around that?
It's a little...
I don't know, first of all, we'll figure that out. But, but we, we have a lot on this agenda, let's move on. So, um, okay, so, do I have a motion a second for the site plan?
So, so, what?
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So this meeting, this key, the, all three hearings remain open, we're not making any decisions tonight, we're not closing. We're gonna welcome other comments when we reschedule it, um, which will be, which is the next?
May 6th.
May 6th.
Um, but we would have to take the applicant's permission to extend it to the 90-day...
May 6th? That's the first...
The 90-day action period.
Because April 1st is only next week for our next meeting, and then the third meeting on Monday is, is, is Patriots' Day, it's a holiday. So, can we, can we get an, a written extension from you?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so we'll say May 6th, contingent upon receipt from the planning department of a written extension from the applicant at 6:30?
Yeah, 6:30, 6:31, 6:32.
Yes, yes.
So move, so move, so move.
Oh, should they?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So this will be continued to May 6th at 6:30. No decisions are being made, and then we'll have a site walk on Tuesday, April 2nd, at the site, 4:00. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, guys. Any questions, if we have? Um, let's open up the 6:45 public information meeting for site plan approval, 2:32, no question?
Last half.
Okay. No, 2:42, then, no? Yeah.
Does anybody want to match? 2:42, no screen?
Oh, me. Oh, oh.
This is going to be a body, body.
Okay. Well, you start your every presentation like that.
Whoa. That's true. Where is your agenda?
Probably.
It might happen. It might happen.
Especially, I don't know, maybe in that one over there.
I think you have 4:50.
Yeah, we can roll this. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yes. Can you, might I sit down?
Get the mic. Yes, you might.
Um, yeah. I'm Paul Drowe from Properties. We're going to talk about the project review for 22 Mill Street, Diamond House. Uh, because the existing building has been in actual for a number of years. Uh, it's a big order of lots. You're proposing, uh, proposing a drive-through for the property. Uh, over the years, uh, that, in the middle of about 20 years, they've recently downsized. And you've been working with a restaurant for actually a hundred years that wanted this location, uh, for, they're asking for a drive-through. Um, so this, why we need to have special time to do that?
Not special. Site, site. Otherwise, you can just put a vehicle, the building exists.
Site. So we're looking for a technical review for the drive-through window. Um, before you provide, with that, uh, we have a company, we are putting in water, water so line for, for the, uh, the restaurant. We are adding layers in one way, around the building, currently two ways, but with the traffic going around. The parking meets the criteria for parking, plus one spot. Uh, we are adding light towers to the front and the back of the property and lighting around the side. Uh, and it's no commercial, uh, now.
Where's your slogan?
There's no, take up one, and I think it's.
That's ratio.
That we're asking for. Uh, we are not adding any building signs to the property. So this has been existing for about 30 years.
And so?
About the drive-through. It's all, yeah. Yeah.
No, you're not going up at all? You just keep them, you just renovate your building.
We're just renovating the building. We put a demise, we're coming, yeah, demise of all that. Almost finished. We'll be putting a new, uh, uh, beside the front that there will be a restaurant, a Chipotle restaurant going onto the left side of the building.
Did you say what kind of restaurant?
Chipotle.
Chipotle, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know they did try.
So, well, that's my, so that's my question. So that's why.
The drive-through is more like a curbside go pick up. It's a pre, ahead of time ordering. So it's not a drive-through in the sense of, or Dunkin's, we have a long queue line. So it is technically a drive-through, but it's not the traditional drive-through.
So is this, have they been, have they been constructing them like this recently?
This is, this is kind of a test, I believe.
So what they, what the process is now is it's, uh, the client picks up the app. The app has the credit cards already in their app. They come in, it's just a pickup window. So the food's prepared for prior, they come in, there's no cash exchange. So the drive-through, drive-through is a pickup window, which is exchange of food that's, that's ready.
And it's exclusively that? So I can't go up and talk into a boss and say I'm going? There's nothing? It's exclusively for?
Pickups.
For pickups? Can we get any lenses? Jesus. Can we get them like a car? Social media.
I said. Plus you don't want.
Plenty of weight on it. Forty people.
I mean, yeah. Sixty, not here. Restaurants are, for 65% of businesses now being charged by.
In general, not much.
And you, obviously, you can still go in. This isn't like a roll the toes. We have to stand outside the, you know.
So.
And you know how much you need in the parking spaces you have today? So it meets all the parking regulations and parking space requirements?
Plus, right. Yes. Plus one. We need the plus one.
I, I can, now that I understand that, that's different. I mean, I'll be honest with you. The planning director, right, we sold today, had some concerns about it, I don't think. But if it's exclusively for food that's already prepared, because I was thinking, I, by the time my daughter figures out what she wants, we're in line. That's why. And.
People realize that.
I mean, if Chipotle wants to go this route, because my thought is, I kind of like to see what's going in my food bowl. So instead of just getting it at the window.
There's no back room. And there's no back room.
There's a whole group actually making these foods up. I got a set one about a month ago. And this whole area was just for the pickups.
Oh, really? It's separate, it's separate?
Separate, it was a separate, like, order area or whatever. Amazing.
So it is still, um, you want seats inside? Fifty-two seats instead of this. Then there will be people coming in, the traditional, they make it online, uh, particular.
And so, and do you think there's still storage areas? So if you're going to have a drive-through, do you think it's going to, do you think, you went to speak, you're going to have to drive someone?
Well, we've had this property for 20 years. And we are changing nothing to this time.
That's where you saw this one, right?
Yeah.
You just push it.
This is the back of the grease trap, right? This is the.
Yeah, that area behind. Just push it right back?
Well, it's over here, yes.
So is that designated on the panel?
Well, it's the, yeah, it's the pink. Yeah.
We should, we should just, we should have that load rather than.
It's that.
I mean, it's no.
It is. Oh, it is, okay. The light's bad here. It's a pink there, but it's not normal.
So let me, let me, before I forget, let me go through the project review, um, comments. So the wire inspector approves, building inspector approves. Um, the planning department has comments. Um, I'll go through those quickly and in a minute. The DPW states, um, why can't the snow storage areas be landscaped? The sewer lines at this location have shallow slopes. It will be imperative that the grease trap be maintained on a regular basis. And I know you have response, right? You have responses, please, from Mulaney?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go through those. Uh, no safety here. Okay, so, um, police approve, assessors approve. Health, um, states that the applicant has proposed to install 15,000, uh, 1,500 gallon grease trap for this restaurant. This will allow them to have a maximum of 100 seats. Uh, there may be plans for a future expansion. I'll be interested in answers. The health department requires some detailed plans illustrating the kitchen layout. Uh, conservation approves, it's outside their jurisdiction. And fire approves. We sell the comments. Um, from the office of planning development, um, there is no walking lane to allow for those parking in the rear or those parked, parked parallel. The plan has been revised as follows. A four-foot wide beaded crosswalk along the easterly building wall and extending from the entrance sidewalk to the rear corner of the building against the dumpsters. Is that? Uh, the maneuvering aisle width for parallel parking of 12 feet. The plan has been revised as follows. The two 11-foot travel lanes are replaced with a single 15-foot lane. The five parallel parking spaces would shift westerly, leaving an additional four feet of snow storage along the property line. The drive-through lane would begin at the rear corner of the building, allowing for nine vehicles in queue. Okay. The two handicap accessible parking spaces are proposed to nine foot in width where 12 feet is required. Um, the zoning ordinance notes that where one or both the lawn side of the parking space butts a wall or similar obstruction, the width is 12 feet. No obstruction exists to require this width. The plan, the plans depict two nine-foot wide accessible spaces and a nine-foot wide access aisle for total of 27, 27 feet. Um, the CMRs require at least one VAN accessible space. And the VAN accessible spaces do not have to be separately provided of all required accessible spaces are 11 feet wide and with a five-foot access aisle. For this site, for this site, the effective width of the required accessible area is 27 feet, which is provided for simplicity of stripping, the handicap accessible spaces and access aisles are each shown nine feet wide. The total required width is the same at 27 feet. Since the architectural drawings are in process, the wider access aisles allow flexibility in the placement of the sidewalk curb cut to minimize conflicts with the relocated building Um, the dumpster, is the dumpster accessible by trash pickup service indicate the width of the proposed gate to the surface dumpsters? The dumpster area is accessible for trash pickup service. The scale width of the proposed gate is 14 feet, and the dimension has been added to the. That then.
Existing dumpsters and location adjacent to where the Burbank dumpsters are located.
Okay.
Backdoor.
Uh, the storm runoff detail is required. The existing plan is served by an onsite storm drainage network that produces manholes with plenty of light, discharges into the Mill Street drainage system, whereas the plan proposes no changes to the site and currently is covered according to the site grades. Uh, existing drainage panels continue with no increase in the rates of volume of stormwater runoff. According to the plan, proposes no changes. Um, sidewalks, um, currently no sidewalks exist on, on Mill Street, the focus property, the abutting property to the east or the opposite side of the street. Sidewalk exists at the abutting property to the west, on the opposite side of the driveway. If there's placement of a sidewalk in Mill Street right away, it would result in the reduction of the existing landscaping. Placement of sidewalk within the property would result in loss of required parking. The surrounding area does not cater to pedestrian traffic. And the transition detail is noted as being for the building entrance. Uh, lighting, the light pictured depicted has three cutoff angles, angle options. The, the plans will add a clarification to provide zero, um, degree cutoff angle since the light poles are located within the property. The cutoff angle will be within the property. Wait, so where's the light again?
Light poles on this, the section in the middle, like the front, right here, and right here, and then two in the back, here and here. And then wall packs along spaced 40 feet. Go on, so.
And they stay within?
Yep.
The area, right? And they point inward?
Yes.
And then the traffic impact statement, um, has been provided. Uh, please note that police noted that there are no traffic, safety or traffic concerns to the project. The proposed restaurant use provides the following. Um, it's going to be open 10:45 to 10:00 P.M. Uh, Monday through Friday with pizza, oh, the majority of the business, Monday through Friday with pizza lunchtime. They use a five-minute drive time when gauging sales, so they are pulling from the traffic already in the area rather than being a destination restaurant. The drive-through lane, which triggered site review, is for digital sales pickup, pick only with no food order or money transacted through the window. It is only to pick up an order that has been placed online or via cell phone application. DPW, again, why can't snow storage areas be landscaped? The proposed plan works within the existing developed area. Introduction of landscaping in the snow storage areas would require the removal of existing pavement, pavement and replaced with raised landscaped aisles. The replacement adds expense not needed for the operational proposed uses. In the future, the property owner opens to the idea of adding landscaping to improve the aesthetics as they have done on other properties they own in the city. Um, additional maintenance notes have been added to the grease trap, as DPW suggests. And then the board of health, um, the, the concern about the 15,000 gallon, the 1,500 gallon grease trap, the applicant has known plans to, for future expansion. The development of existing property has been maximized for the proposed use. And architectural plans are being prepared and will be furnished with the appropriate departments by the architect.
Where is the landscaping? I, I'm not seeing areas like that.
If, if you can see the, each is a photograph. You can see what, let's run it. Our property is all pavement.
Yeah.
Except for the. And the strip in the front, which is in the wide, the street right away. In the back of the property is, um, existing wood under behind, the existing, um, property house.
A number of years. Yeah, the trees in front of the property that started that off.
And the owner, we have Toronto Properties in the front, there was a existing grass area that's in the right way that they, a number of years, about six years.
How many feet is the property? I mean, the feet here is what he's talking, right? Landscaping now, the snow storage, just the feet here. What are we talking, five feet there?
This is four feet wide here.
Four feet wide? And it's, and it's pavement now?
Yep.
I know. I'm just saying.
Yeah. Based on, based on the zoning, required they do 5% of our paved surface or part of what in access.
That's right.
Five, 5% is, uh, 1,000 square feet. We're providing, your thought, as we're providing 27, almost 2,800. So we're applying almost three times what's required by zoning.
Okay.
And if we, if we, if they had to, we had a real bumper in winter, yeah, have the truck open anyway.
Mr. Board, have any other questions? Uh, open to the audience, does anyone have any questions? Motion made in seconds of closing the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be back up in a few minutes on the agenda. We're going to move on to our regular meeting. Thank you. Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, water?
Patrick Corle.
Here.
Brett Frederick?
Here.
Paul Weiser? Sal Chukwue? Dr. Rosso? Thomas Cárdenas?
Here.
John Sisum? Excuse.
Okay. Um, minutes of previous meeting, March 4th. I heard they are lengthy. We just got them in on a staffage for a few. Okay. 3.0, 3.1, ANR 4190, Leggett Hill Road.
Great. You have in your packet a, if you have a local 90, you know. I have the plan in here. I'll pass it over.
I've also wanted, my, my. Sorry, saving from Hannigan Engineering. And we have before you tonight a ANR year consideration. Uh, this is probably, that is, we're seeing.
your consideration, uh, this property that has been recently purchased by John Estella, the outside perimeter of the property is shown in blue, there's an existing house at one ninety, about a half mile north of the Sterling Town Line, and what we're proposing is to divide this, this lot into two, uh, shown as lots three A and three B, uh, they both are in excess of the minimum amount of credit area and lot width. Uh, and Mr. Estella is planning on raising the existing house.
The house has just been torn down.
It might have been torn down already, but.
Yeah, it'll buy on Tuesday.
Okay.
Last Wednesday, Thursday.
Uh, and he's proposing to do two additional houses on the lots and tie into existing sewer which is brought in, uh, in this location here. So it's, uh, it's, so.
So three A is to be carved out of, um, pieces of B.
Well, the original parcel was known as parcel four X, so it is now, we're returning to the lot, three A and three B.
And it's a how?
Three A is in excess of.
Oh, I see it.
And three B is in excess.
Oh, I see it now, I see it now, so.
Almost two acres.
So is this?
Yeah, yeah, this, this whole thing is the perimeter.
Oh, okay. Confused because one item is.
No break around.
Yes, we're proposing this line here.
I think it's a lot.
Yeah, a hundred and nine, maybe five hundred.
Yeah, it's good. Motion no notice.
Motion made, second to endorse, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. It, it just keeps getting easier, but I see, I still see Frank in the room. He was right, what did Frank, what did he do? So Bill, so Mike and Bill, what now, let's see what happens. Um, where's Mike and Kenzo?
So, is this one?
No, 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 here it is, no, I got mine, I have it organized. Um, well, uh, cycle plan approved, so we have to schedule the cycle plan approval for Richard Road, Montreal Street, special permit approval for Richard Road, Montreal Street for its use, and special permit approval for Richard Road, Montreal Street density, special permit for multifamily, so I know I keep those together, but.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah.
Five, May sixth?
May sixth, the area of six thirty, six thirty-one and six thirty-two.
So let's do six, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven?
So moved.
Yep.
Motion made and second by Sal? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Three point five, definitive subdivision approved for Mary Avenue extension, so we have to schedule this for a public hearing as well. Again, May sixth? So, seven o'clock? Motion made by Pat? Second? Second, try to grab, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. And three point six, A and R approval for McCann Street, lot two, under our sub five seven two dash ten.
Do you need everybody? See?
Yes.
Is anybody just? This is the little. He's a good geezer, so.
But, yeah.
But, as we get old. You're all familiar with the Aldi bank building between Mount Street and McCann Street, and that sits on a piece of land about three and a half acres, but they don't own the land, they lease it from the, long so limited market, just a, they know the gap. Also on that same crack of land is a single family house at five or two McCann Streets, and the sole purpose of this land is to cut out their house and all that, separate it from the bank.
Oh, so are you saying this is all on the land?
It is, well, it's required to separate it from the common land.
So if this is, is, this is it?
That's it.
So, this is all part of it?
The bank is everything else.
So it's gonna be, so now this is gonna be its own lot, right? Including, including that little piece, okay. You know, you know, this is bothering our planning director very much with these houses encroaching upon us, a very OCD planning director. I say that, made this compliment to our.
We're not increasing the non-chemicals.
I know, no, I know, it's just a comment. Um, did I have a motion? Second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Happy springtime, everybody, tonight.
Actually, well, since you're dead. All right. Okay. Thank you, Frank, great to see you. Four, uh, four mile old business is on, five point oh, uh, new business, uh, together, five point one, point two, point three, Washington Street, that's been scheduled for site visits for April second at four, and continued, um, public hearings for five, six at six thirty, six thirty-one, six thirty-two. Five, there you voted on that. Five point four, cycle plan approved, two fifty-two Mill Street.
Motion to approve.
With conditions from department review?
Yes.
All right, we'll see how that works out.
Yeah, we'll see how it works out, also, if there's any change to the capacity of that restaurant, you know, somebody's gotta bring the idea, tell us the clients, why it's making sure that, you know, it's based on the clients, because I can see that happen, and all of a sudden they're doing great, and all of a sudden it's not a fifty, two people, it's, it's a hundred, and all of a sudden we get a hundred, and.
I know, I know, just, yeah, okay, so, so we'll add the conditions from, or the comments from the department.
I have one problem, though, I can't drive by.
But you can have to work in advance.
No, I can't.
Okay. Um, motion made, second to approve with department head conditions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All, all those opposed? Okay, six point oh, communication, six point one, correspondence received from Samuel Campbell regarding twelve Rome Main Street, improvements, Mass Department of Transportation, project number six oh eight five six one.
Yep. You have in your packet a letter from G P I, and it goes over all of the development number six number twelve. So hopefully, they just wanna see if we have any comments. They solicited the mayor's office for the comments as well.
There is, we have one question. We don't have any comments tonight.
It's from, the comments from Cory.
Yeah, uh, somebody was supposed to give the report for that in the hospital, the hospital.
Yep, had the urgent care across the street, it's gonna work with.
That's right, but, do we have any resolution on that? I don't think we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna continue the, the owners of the tower.
To see how they apportion it, you know. And apportion the cost.
It was the urgent care that set that discussion.
The old tire line, they getting rid of it?
It says pedestrian, pedestrians, combinations along the road. I mean.
Someone put a, a structure probably won't be awesome. Gonna crack a few.
We needed to, we needed to address this area for one time. Does anyone have any comments? Have we paid for it?
We're not. Right?
Well, they were supposed to give us a update in the hospital, weren't they? Weren't they supposed to have meetings in the?
It's the hospital room, yeah.
And it was supposed, they were supposed to.
Traffic study.
Yep, traffic study, and they were supposed to, because we were gonna try to pass on all the costs to the hospital.
And we caught, and the urgent care.
And the urgent care.
There were, in the, there was a lot of issues that needed to be addressed for that project, um, I have it, and I can bring it up in the first, if you will, if you're ever visit that.
Sure. Because, you know, they were supposed to have meetings and, and, you know, the hospital didn't think it was fair that they, you know, had the appropriate amount of cost on something like this, should be shared by the other businesses. So they were gonna, you know, we were supposed to get a report on that.
I thought.
April first, April Fool's Day. Yeah, we got it.
All right, so we don't need any action on this?
No.
Need more. I want to introduce myself, I'm sorry, but I thought my name, you don't know this, my name is Rodney, I just purchased that land of, um, uh, Magic Fuel. You guys know this?
Yeah.
I just bought it last week, so I, I wanted to go through things with you guys, I, that's why I wanted to come to the meeting first, meet you guys first. Um, I'm going to do like the, going through the, um, car sales and all that, because I had all these permits before me, so.
The casting was, when there's one right on the bottom, we have to say, finish.
Yeah, um, there is, yeah, there is behind the building, there's like a big lot, I don't know what we can use it for, what we can do with it.
With it, right?
Yeah, um, it kind of paved before I seen that, um, but if there's anything we can do before I apply for the license, I can do some changes, I'm here to make things like look good, I wanna grow that business really good, that's what we do, um, the youngest one is from the family, um, the whole family is in the same business, so we go from one town to town, I have, one of my brothers live in this town, I live in Ridgewater, about a few, I would buy a house here, I'm living in this town.
She, I would be, that planning director.
Yeah, what you might wanna do is start with our small business coordinator, named Melissa Taska, can I get your contact information?
I did get my name and information, I came and saw that.
Saw Melissa?
Yeah, I touched and remember put me in this week, so I can talk to you guys, but I guess probably she put me for next week.
Yeah, let me, let me get your contact information?
Sure.
And, uh, I'll talk to Melissa, and you probably wanna come to what's called a technical review meeting, and that's, yeah, you're gonna get, end up here, but that would be later in the process.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
We're ahead, we're headed.
Yeah, it's not a major, what could, like, what's right to do, what's not right, and be allowed uses.
Do you have a card, or could I?
I haven't had a card, definitely.
Can you write your name and number and email? Rodney, what is your last?
W A H I V as a boy.
Because they can tell you what uses are allowed, and that's.
Yeah, that's why she probably go, you can ask her if she rests in here like that, but, um, I said, yeah, I'll come down and then meet everyone, which I'm happy to see you guys. It's so quiet. Yeah, hopefully, the whole finish date is gonna be a lot less than everyone, I really want to put one in to one ninety-nine as a celebration, I want the mayor or anybody who comes down and cut the.
Don't over big wedding.
Yeah, I wanna do all this, but I'm waiting for the new signs and waiting for all that stuff, so I, I wanna go in like, you know, nice and clean, not like, I know I see a place, I don't like it, but I said, you know what, it's probably what I want, is to make it look good and then go from there.
Good luck, Rodney.
Are you, are you able to come by this week during the day?
Yeah, yeah, I'm free all day, I mean, this, right now, this week, probably the whole week, I'm free because it kind of everything stopped, like all the licensing and all that, so I have to run for the whole day, so, especially inspections.
Well, we'll make an appointment, you'll come in.
Yeah, I'll leave my phone number, you guys can call me.
And your, and your email, also.
Okay. Great, and so director's report?
Yeah, basically, I mean, I, I, we've been getting a lot of applications in the office, you can see them in front of you, you're seeing work coming forward, and all I've been doing is writing reviews and reports, and you know what all of those are anyway, and I just summarize those.
Well done. Nice work, good job.
I have our intern busy, he's doing a great job, keep watching the meeting, um, from the board for March fourth.
And you still came back?
From the license, yeah. That's how, great job, call, and, call down in the license. Um, enthusiastic, driven young man.
You're up, it's, I'm up. Motion carries.
All right, motion made, second to endorse. Second, all those in favor?
You're gonna lose your spot.